Hey, we'll call upon a select board meeting to order on Thursday, October sixteenth at seven PM for the agenda approval. Approve the minutes of ten, nine, fourteen. Warrants, mail, new business, American Legion Post ninety, future of the building. Old business, the towing letter that was sent out, and then the talk with the person who have a contract with to do with the dam site coming back to hydro. And then a discussing with the person to do with the town east with the west side of the dam. Then we're gonna talk about personnel at the transfer station, and then we've got some employee evaluations and pay raises to do. What's your?
Make a motion, we accept agenda.
Second it. Anything else be added? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approve the minutes of ten, nine, fourteen?
Some more second it.
Any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Abstain. Warrants. Payroll, ending ten, seventeen, fourteen, in the amount of seven thousand five hundred fifty-nine dollars and thirty-eight cents. Costs payable, ending ten, seventeen, fourteen, in the amount of one hundred and fifteen thousand three hundred eighty-five dollars and thirty cents, which a hundred and three dollars and nine, a hundred and three thousand ninety-one dollars and twenty-five cents was for blacktop. What's your pleasure, guys? Got a motion move? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any other ayes?
Yeah, everybody said aye, didn't they?
My hearing's going bad. I think.
Did you say aye?
I abstain. I didn't have to vote, there were so many ayes. I thought I might have to there for a minute, but it was enough ayes. Hey, hey. We hit in our mail. We have the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission Office Energy Project. They're talking about seminars to do with the dams and dam safety registration and seminars, and I know we have to fill stuff out every year. Everybody get a chance to look at this? I, if the board doesn't mind, I might attend that in the Concord one when they have it. But, and that's, gotta make sure of the dates. I gotta check my calendar, but I think I'll be fine. It's twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth of November. Can you remind me of that? And put one of them in my box, and then I'll have it too, so I can read it again. Thank you, Linda. We have note, sale is final for the mobile home. I was, I think you had a stipulation for last week, and treasurer has notified us that it's final. Treasurer has asked us to select a member of the board to attend the tax sale scheduled for November third to represent the town in the tax sale. Who would you like to send?
There's only one person, Ronnie.
I can't be representing the town. I may go there to bid.
He bids.
Me too.
I'm gonna be out of commission, I won't be able.
I'm gonna be unemployed. What time is it at?
Doesn't say on here. Does that normally happen right early morning, or?
Usually around ten o'clock.
Around ten o'clock in the morning, usually.
Something makes it hard for me, too.
There was mixed, uh, wordings on it. They said I couldn't, couldn't bid one time, then they said you could, so I don't know. If you can buy a property on your own, I don't mind going, 'cause I plan on going anyway. But if you can't, if it's a conflict, I don't want nothing to do with it. But I was told both ways.
I wonder if it has to be a select board member? Or representative of the town?
Last time I was here, Steve was here, and he bid back something, and you were here bidding on something. And Steve was here, and he took back a piece of property.
Well, why, why, I'm just speaking here now.
When is that?
It's November third.
You know what, I'll, I'll go. I'm not worrying about bidding. I got enough people to bid.
Okay, okay. The board in agreement to let Henry be the one representing the town?
Yeah.
Sure.
Thank you, Henry.
You wanna buy trailers, or?
No. We own some already.
You should say that before I go.
I don't know what's for sale. I don't know what's for sale. If it's a trailer on a piece of-
I don't own, I don't own either. I just wanna have heads up before I go.
If there's a trailer on a piece of lean with a well and stuff, then maybe we wanna own it. If it's a trailer that sits in the middle of the park, we might not.
Well, if you have time, guide me through that.
You'll have to use your expertise.
Oh, okay.
On knowing whether there's value or not. Okay, we will rely on your judgment.
Oh, I-
Your good judgment.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. Okay.
Just was wondering, that was all, what the board feel on that situation.
Yeah, 'cause you'll, you'll be presenting, so.
Okay, now, uh, we have a letter from the Veron Agency of Transportation to do with the work done on Route seven. And they would like us to sign off on it, accepting it, the, the work that was done there. Our road foreman has made a note that he was concerned with the material they used to fill in the shoulders, because on the turns, where you come like down North Ponto Road and so forth, that dirt is all kicking out very easily into the road. So, I would recommend the board make a motion that I signed this with the attached message from Casey to go with it. If the board would approve that, I'll sign it and-
Make a motion.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
I'll leave it in the mail, Linda.
Thank you.
'Cause otherwise you might lose it. Okay, Board of Selectmen. We are being requested by our E nine-one-one coordinator that there is some street naming, things that need to be done. The roads she lists is one naming identifies East and West Skyboro Road. One will be a safety road name change, which is Grandview. And one will be the new private Jackson Cross Road. There's already a Jackson Cross Road. Do you know what that one's?
It's gonna be a PBT off of Jackson Cross.
Okay, so it's a PBT off of Jack, so it can be named, and it won't be named Jackson Cross Road, it'll be whatever it's gonna be, okay. Okay, uh, how much notice do we have to give for this, for the hearing?
It's gonna be a regular public hearing, so it's gonna require fifteen day warning.
Okay, uh-
So, you can either do it on Thursday, or do you wanna do it on Wednesday?
I think if it's just naming these three roads, I would say Thursday's fine, just-
Six thirty?
Uh, do it a half hour before our regular meeting.
Sure.
Let's do it the, the second week of November, if that makes sense. I think that's open, there's not a whole lot in it. If it isn't, we can do it one of the other weeks in November, just the first week.
I just wanna make it happen before the end of the year, we're starting to get busy and stuff.
Okay, yeah, that's whatever, just fit it in so we can do it. Thank you. Okay, then we have a letter from the Green Mountain National Forest Ranger's Office to do with the invitation for comments on the south of Route nine Integrated Resource Project. And there's pages and pages of this, and what they're doing between the National Forest and other lands that are in ownerships. And it looks like, you know, you're talking from Wolford on down, and probably beyond. Have you had a chance to read all this? But it's there, there's maps there for anyone that wish-
I'm gonna leave that on my desk, so anybody can come in.
Okay, thanks. 'Cause I'll probably look, it's my Sunday reading, I guess. Okay, thank you. That's a mail. Oh, no, one more thing. We received a letter notifying us that the people that hold our contract for taking the street animals would like to talk to us, and basically have given us thirty days to try to set something up to talk with them. So if we can also somehow fit that in somewhere. Thanks. Ah, American Legion Post ninety, future of the building.
You're up.
Well, it's the letters we have, I hope, that we send out to our members. And, uh, we got a reply back from thirty-two, twenty-eight, said speak with you folks, before said they didn't care. So as a representative of Post ninety, I'm here to speak. We need to start a conversation in this room about the future of this building. There's a lot of people that just don't understand how long we could stay here, concerns about new town office, uh, some things that we need to know. When do we have to leave here? The Legion members feel like we have a very nice piece of property, it's in good condition. The Legion's been going thirty-nine years now, they've done a lot of good work in the community. As somewhat community organizer, I always look to the Legion for help, and they've always been there. Today, they're in the same circumstances, they're not down and out. Fairly healthy, but we're running out of gas, we're getting burned out. And Bingo's keeping things going pretty well, and, uh, we've been going eight years with it, and it's running out of gas. So, with a nice facility like this, and not knowing a lot of things about what's going on with the new town office committee, or when it's gonna come to, people are getting a little nervous about what could happen. It's not really a great time of the year to be going out asking for a bond, but these folks have been working hard, and at some point, we're gonna get some information. And, uh, we would like to be in a situation of a backup in some course. There's more to the Legion property than you think there is. There's two certified kitchens in there, there's a great pavilion, which could be easily put into a farmer's market. We're on, you know, we're in good shape building-wise. The addition was in ninety-three, of course, it'd be after somebody go in there and check out what's right and what's wrong. And when the new committee comes in with their things, we might find out who gets what, who needs what. I think that's what we're all looking for. And so, the Legion just wants to be there as a backup. If, in the event that the townsfolk say no, what's the alternative? What we had forty-five years ago with the school? This is vote no twice, third time we vote, put it in the swamp? We wanna be in a little better place right now. And, uh, that's what we're asking for, this conversation is starting here. And I'm sure a lot of townsfolk out there listening will be asking some questions too, as to how much, how long, uh, and that's pretty much it.
Yeah, I, I attended the town committee meeting this Monday, and I know they're moving forward with some steps to give you some of the information that you just talked about. They're gonna have a drawing showing some office spaces and some things, so people will know what the layout is of it. And that should be coming sometime later this month. The, the thing that, when people talk about the Legion, and even the committee did, one of the concerns is what the renovation costs, or what needs to be renovated. So at some point, working with the Legion, the town needs to decide whether they're gonna to have somebody go down and take a look and do an analysis of what that means and what that cost is, so they can compare apples to apples. Otherwise, we're, we're taking some estimates here of what it means to fix this place into something and do the other one, you know? We could do the same here. What's it cost to tear this down and put up an addition on the back of this other building that would meet our needs? We just need to take and get some cost estimates, I think, is where we're at. And I know they're putting, that's what the town committee's doing right now with their plans. So, I guess the, the real question is with the board, you know, another one popped up the other day to do with the North Ponto Church down there. That might be a possibility, you know, but all these things come with a price tag.
Sure.
And, and that's the unknown, and I think when we're asking voters, we need to know what we're really asking for, not making estimates.
And that's the step that we wanna take. When does someone come into the Legion, when does someone check out, someone said yesterday, okay, and we can't use the school for some portion of something, we own that. Uh, you know, everybody's talking, but we need a little bit of action right now.
Yeah, yeah, well, as far as the school goes, and the school was built X amount of years ago, we do have those rights. That's what, you know, you're talking about it being voted on, voted on, well, that's what finally, I think, sold it.
It was a beating place.
Right? If you recall all the news.
Sure, absolutely.
You know, you know what I'm saying? So everything, everything, but the main thing is, is to get, um, get it on the table, uh, so that the public can make a decision of where they want the town to go, or want us to go. That's the bottom line, correct?
I'd like to see an election being held there, so the townspeople could go in there and, and walk around, have kind of an open deal. It's a nice place to, there's parking, there's handicap accessible.
You mean host a, like an open house type thing?
Yeah, or have the next election there, or, you know.
Come March, have the election at the Legion versus having it at the firehouse. That sort of thing is what he's suggesting. That's something I'd say we'd have, he'd have to bounce off of Karen, because Karen is responsible for making sure these elections run smoothly.
And I think we need, you know, and I'm sure the Legion is probably already talking about, you know, what they want.
Yeah, sure.
I mean, I'm sure that-
Whatever happens here tonight, it's gonna be, the public is gonna vote, and the Legion members are gonna vote. We're just, we're just running up the flagpole, seeing and saluting.
Um, I know that pretty quick, we should have some idea of numbers where the committee's coming from. And then, I don't know exactly if the committee's gonna, you know, I probably presume the committee will be getting involved.
Would we have an architect with me?
Well, that's the sort of thing.
I, I think on, on that end, um, you know, there would have to be a safe built, and the safes have to be, you know, temperature, fireproof, all, all controls to protect the documents. That, I, I think that would be probably one of the biggest expenses, but you're gonna have to do that anyhow if you build a new town hall. You know, I, I think it comes down to what does, what does the Legion want out of that building? Can two coexist, can there be a building swap? You know, what, uh, I don't know, but I, I think there's a lot to be discussed here. Um, and, and I'm not canning the idea of a new town hall, it's just that financially, uh, I don't know if this town can bear that expense. And I really think that this is a viable option worth exploring, because we've spent a few thousand dollars on drawings, et cetera, for new town hall. And I, I think it would be worth the expense to at least hire professionals to go down to the Legion on our behalf and say, will this work?
Well, the sketch plans that have been done so far, and I only noticed because of the amounts that were thrown around on Monday, so if I'm wrong, but I'm gonna tell you what I heard, about forty-five hundred dollars have been spent to get the sketch plans and the layout. And the next thing is you get more detailed drawings. So I would think to have someone go in and look and say what it is, you know, and if I have to, I could pin an RFP that basically says, uh, you want somebody to review this building and see if it's feasible. And if it's feasible, what would it cost? 'Cause they have the list of offices they want, they have the other things, the ball and the rest. They could go down and look, take that information, say, here's what it's gonna be to put that in there. And I think that would be a, a low cost. But be aware, again, it's, it's a sketch thing, it's a guy that walks in, walks around quick, and he'll tell you that if you really wanna do it, then you got details and drawings and much more costs that goes later to do it. But at least you would get a feeling of the potential of what, of what that might cost. And, and again, I'm saying that's probably a few thousand bucks.
And I think that's well worth the town exploring, because if we do have a viable option, I'd hate to see it go by. That's my personal opinion, but I want the people of the town to decide this, not me.
I agree.
And, uh, and I think that, I can't believe that it would cost a fortune to have somebody look this building over. It is already handicap accessible, it's, it's fairly modern, it's been kept up to the day, it's a public building.
Parking's always there.
Not, uh, something that we're buying, wasn't even a public building, it is all that. And it does have the, a lot of things that going for it. You know, it's got that big pavilion out in the back too there, for, it could be used for different things. And there's plenty of parking, and there's two floors. And in my opinion, if they sealed it off, you'd have two separate buildings. Got rid of that stairway, you don't need it, then you don't need an elevator. You got two huge buildings, pretty good size areas there. That's just my opinion, but I'm just setting it out there, 'cause like, people who are watching this or whatever, they can think about it. It's up to the people, not up to me.
Already hooked the sewage.
Yeah, hooked to the sewer, and I mean, and there's, there's village water there. So, I mean, they have their own water, but there's also village water. So I mean, it isn't like the, it wouldn't pass all that criteria, whatever. So I mean, there's a lot of good thing, and, and we're a town that has, uh, very limited resources, other than just, all we have is taxes. And maybe the dam, I don't know, but all, but right now, all we got's taxes. You know, from the homeowners. So, you know, there's some positive things going on, I, I think, you know, the hospital thing down at the town.
The thing is-
Yeah, maybe, maybe. And then maybe.
Well, I, I think everything that's been said, you know, is, is great. But there's one thing that we haven't talked about. Where do we start?
We just started.
We just started, yeah, well.
The, the conversation's begun, there's people out here listening and-
What I'm trying to say is, we, there's no question that before we're gonna go into this thing, we're gonna have someone look at that building on our behalf, the town's behalf or your behalf.
You have, you have money that's, that's set aside for the town hall.
Right.
And, and part of that's, part of that's being spent to, to do the design work and so forth. And again, if you, if you're talking, again, very little money, I would hope, because we wrote an RFP, and we would then decide whether we pick the person, tell them to do it or not, based on what they do for the bidding. Again, I don't think it's a lot of money, but then you get your answer, which is, well, I think we really need, and then I, I think you're right, and you ask the people what they, what they want. But you have, you can compare apples to apples at that point versus-
Well, we, you'll be able to compare apples to apples, once you know the price.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's why I-
Come on, come on, that's a, that's a fact.
Yep.
Now, now there's no, um, now you're starting right from the thing that, first, first ball out.
Just rumors.
Well, as you guys know, I had to put a grant out here in two days a while ago.
Right, so.
So if you, if you need it, if you need it, if you, if you wanna, it'll be a short RFP that'll basically say what I said. It's gonna go down and look at it, do a study, to see if it's feasible to meet the same requirements that they're doing on the town hall today. And that's what the feasibility would be, so they would compare and do comparing.
Yeah.
And they would provide the list.
And they would have to go into more detail.
And, and at that point, at least we'll know what it means cost-wise.
I think you would, I think it would probably have to be an engineer.
Well, if you do, that's what they do.
Someone that's familiar with code.
No, no, no.
Plumbing and- When you send out the RFP, we-
The safe, to be on a pretty foundation.
I mean, like Ronnie said, hang on, just to be honest, it, it is already a public building, it already has to, uh, you know.
Be certain code. Maybe we know that it's up to code right now?
We don't know that, but for a fact, but I, what I'm saying is-
I'm not looking to debate that, but here's what I'm gonna do. When I wrote the RFP last time, I specified specifically, people had to show their licenses for the architectural engineering and so forth. And that's the same thing I would do in this RFP. So anyone that applies would be qualified to do what we want done. I'm not gonna just say, hey, here's an RFP, I'm looking for someone to go down and do blah. It's also gonna say, I want these credentials, and if you look at the last RFP I did for the town hall thing, you'll see all that's in there.
Okay.
Because it is an RFP, it's, you want it to meet what you want. In fact, I'll, let me do something, and I'll show it to you before we send it anywhere, and you guys decide whether you wanna do it or not. Okay?
Good.
Thanks a lot, Jimmy.
Thanks for the added work.
For your time, anyway.
I always like more-
I gotta stay and listen to Sam.
I always like more work.
Grab a chair.
Come on up, Bill.
You're ready. Where do you wanna start? I'm here for two things, really, to talk about an easement and to talk about the, the dam.
Well, let's, 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 let's hold on, hold on one minute, because he's jumping his other turn here. What do you want, you wanna talk about this towing letter first?
Uh, this will only take a minute. Our last Selective's meeting, we were approached by a couple of, this has been in town to write a letter to the state police in regards to towing and calls, et cetera, um, which I did, Linda sent it out, and I got a reply from the state police that they are gonna stick to the process that they've have in place, have had in place, and probably will always have in place. Um, and, uh, they're not gonna change their policy for the vendors in town here. They feel that they're called, and if the phone is not answered or whatever, they move down the list, regardless of who it is. And, um, so, we had that discussion with the state police, and that's a done deal. That's it.
Okay, thanks.
All right.
Sorry to keep you waiting, but-
No, no problem. All right, I'm gonna smooth this chair up, so we don't get too many of the-
Which one would you like to take care of first?
That's up to you guys. Do you have?
We have no preference.
Why don't we take care of this, so that, uh, that way you can get out of here?
David Spur with Blaze Design. In last meeting, we discussed a potential moving the easement that ran somewhere in this, along this purple line, to this pink line. And the conclusion of that meeting was, you guys were going to go and look at it. I don't know if you did or not, that's fine, if you did or you did not.
I did not.
That's fine, it doesn't matter.
I did not, I, it wasn't that I didn't want to, I just-
No, that's, that's fine. And, and that's, that's, you guys opted to take that option, and if you did or you didn't, that's your choice. This evening, Bill and I walked the property, and, um, with a lot of the leaves down and such, it made it easier to find where the road may have been. And as I depicted here, it's not exactly correct. What I'm recommended to Bill, and what Bill recommended to me, was that I locate the road that I, as I see it, as we just walked it this evening, um, to some point back in here, and then from this point here, come out to the road this way. It looks to be that this garage was built possibly on or inside the easement, and it looks like there might be some fill in this vicinity in the process of, of putting this garage now, house up. That's not that it can't be stabilized, that's not that it can't be, but the best way to make it economical to the, to the homeowners and to the town and such, would be to come in this way, and then, and, and he believes that they could come in and make the corners and whatever with equipment that they would need to do. And of course, we would assess all that prior too, and if we need to widen it in this area from thirty to forty-five or fifty, I'm sure we can resolve that issue.
So is this going down with the lot, the lot line, and where the land has been subdivided? Is that what you're talking about, putting the new, new, I have a highlighter if you want it.
Yeah, if you have a yellow one. Just to color up the map some more. The road, the road looks to be, and looks to stop about here. And it's pretty rough, rocky, whatever, from here to the dam. Wherever the dam is, right about here. And then, it looks like, something like that. There's two places where, in this vicinity, that it kinda split and went up, or split and went down, or what.
So it actually came out to the other road way before it got to the bridge, the, the angle you're putting there?
This, it, it came something like-
Yeah, I would agree with that. If you stand right here, it's a, it's almost a straight line.
And it's almost, and it's reasonably flat, and closer to the water, where if you needed to get the equipment like he's expressing, that needed to be down there then, and now, or futuristically, it's down almost at the water's edge.
And takes you up to, to the dam where you could, you couldn't, you could probably get within twenty, thirty feet.
Thirty to fifty feet of it.
Yeah, something like that, you could drive up to it. When I look at it, I mean, I obviously see that there's some things to try to avoid, like moving buildings that are there. So, obviously, that's a bad situation. We looked at it from here, and it looks like if you had to, and this isn't something you obviously are gonna do all the time. But if you had to, you, you could cut a little, do, you know, you'd have to knock a little berm down there, but you could avoid the garage and all these other things, and actually get pretty close to being able to drive down there. The concern, and again, I'm just gonna tell you my two cents at this point in time. The concern that I would have is that you have a federally, well, you have a site that's actually federally exempted from licensing. With that is this easement, which is tied to it. Where you're gonna run into problems, regardless of my involvement or not, is if you have to come in, if FERC says you need to do a repair, you're gonna have to drive a truck out there. If there's a big storm and the dam goes, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to actually deal with that. As to whether or not you can access this easement, I would guess that it would be better to define that- As to whether or not you can access this easement, I would guess that it would be better to define that now so that you could get out there, because then you, you'll end up falling into fault of your exemption from licensing, which could be a whole nother issue. So there's a lot of little pitfalls to get around, but I do think that with what we were looking at, there's a way to do that that can work for everybody, so that you could feasibly get a truck out there if you needed to. If you can get to right about here, it's, you can drive, I mean, it's just all small brush right now, you could drive right through it.
The biggest, the biggest trees out there are four to, are six to eight inches. Right. Um, and a lot of it's brush and undergrowth of about inch to three inches.
Okay.
Um, and when I was looking from this top of bank down, I did not see it due to all that heavy undergrowth. Now that most of the leaves are down and such, it's a lot clearer and easier to see.
So, is the homeowner in agreement with the line that you just drew?
Has not. I, because of the time constraints of when we, I met with Bill this evening, related to this meeting, she has not heard this. Um, she wants it resolved.
And at this time, she owns both?
She owns both pieces. She wants it resolved.
Now's the time to resolve it.
Laid down in stone. Here's where it is. This is all you get, you don't get anymore. Because right now, the deed description reads thirty feet in width for maintenance, repair, whatever is necessary. That means, right now, you could drive in here, circle three times around the well, go through the living room, back around through the garage, back up here, through the house, down to here, come back all the way, and do it again. And there's nothing stopping you because you have thirty feet in width, not nailed down, not expressly described.
Whatever it takes to get up there.
And that's why I was suggesting this, until Bill and his experience with what he's doing, said, there's no way we can drop twenty to thirty feet like you're asking me to do.
No, can't.
Yeah, you'd have to get a boom truck in or any truck like that. It's just too, just too far away.
And, and, and this, one of the requirements of an easement that's not expressly written as to exactly where it is. I mean, if it says existing over the existing road, it's my responsibility to find the existing road. It does not say that. It says thirty feet width for access and maintenance, to get whatever vehicles over there to fix the dam. Uh, but the homeowner gets to say where, if it's not expressly desired, e- expressed, and so she was in favor of it going there. It does not answer the purpose of why it's there. So I have to say no to that. I mean, I'm sorry, you know, and I'm not gonna continue down that path.
Yeah, and just in full disclosure, we'd probably wanna discuss, you'd probably wanna talk to her about the fact that if anybody did have to drive in there, you'd have to deal with that berm, which would be pretty easy. I mean, it's, it's just enough that you wouldn't wanna drive. And, uh, and the bump out of the footings, that you'd have to figure out how to get around that too. Or the, uh, the fill.
The fill.
There's a bunch of fill that comes over the road partway.
When they, when they filled this in to put this garage in.
Took a dozer in there and, and leveled it all off.
Yeah. I mean, I'm sure you could get around it. It's just you, you couldn't drive it now, you'd have to bump, you'd have to swing around it somehow.
Swing wide or put in retaining walls in order to hold it back, or a little bit of both. You know, and if I need to make something that's forty-five or fifty feet here, and thirty feet here, and then thirty feet from here down.
Yeah, that's the concern I'd have with the large equipment you're talking about. You wanna make sure you can make the turn.
Right.
Yeah.
Cause once you make the turn, you're a nice straight shot.
Yeah, it's not any small trucks anymore nowadays.
No, I understand that. And I'm not, and no, it was, I got it. And I, I.
Yeah, and you may wanna also think about, just for the sake of, it, it may be that you have to pull around, and sort of enough backup in here towards that garage so that you could then back up and get out. It may be, just cause it's no longer a straight shot back to a road where you can navigate, but.
And you know, we've expressed concern about, um, allowing a piece close to the bridge there for a hydrant in the future. If I did look at it, I would say probably where the driveway starts right there over.
This driveway.
Yeah.
Yep, I mean, we can do.
Keep that corner, which I think we already have, but.
You know.
To make it definitive, you know.
Yeah, it's better than whatever circuit, whatever, you're gonna record this after it's done.
Oh, yes. Oh, yeah.
And the bottom line, we wanna make sure what's, whatever it's gonna be, we need it on there.
That's fine.
So, uh, well, I think one of your first steps is, uh, and, you know, from what I'm hearing is to, uh, talk with the landowner, and, um, hash it out, and then see how agreeable this can be. And if so, uh, I guess at that time, you can come back to the select board.
Show the drawing and explain how the large trucks are getting there. I, you know, what I'm hearing tonight, as long as the, the path is made so that the equipment can get there that's necessary to get there, and it gets drawn on a plane, I'm okay. You know, I don't have any trouble with it, because it meets our requirement of what we need. It's not that we're looking for anything other than the fact to get to the dam and service it.
And we're not looking to build a road, it's just an access point in the future for equipment.
And incidentally, this, this conversation is gonna have an immediate effect on the next conversation.
So my question is, is the town at this time, is the select board at this time, in agreement with the red line as it's shown? Granted, however it works, if there's site adjustments that need to be made, you know, for example, that, then, then I can, I can talk to her about what needs to. Yeah?
As long as it meets getting equipment in and out, that's all I care.
Yeah.
It, 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 uh, saved me in her. That's the key, because like you said, if we went straight down the drop on the other end, it sounds like we would've had a little problem.
Yeah, I, it's a drop. It's definitely a straight drop.
Wouldn't be too safe.
So in other words, you're talking about going across from, uh, Dean Road.
Coming across this.
Instead of coming in from down here.
Coming across the driveway that's here.
The existing driveway to the garage.
The driveway that's here, and then making this turn, however this is, and if it's necessary to do a temporary turnaround right here, and then follow the road that I would locate, that's already in place. Now, is it totally up to quote code and grade? No. I can tell you that, because it's full of trees. But if you were to cut down all the trees, would it be? Hmm, probably not. So it would have to be reconditioned at that time.
Stumped and.
Exactly. Reconditioned, stumped, grate regraded, you know, dump trucks loaded dirt, bill dozed in and packed and compressed and such, so that you can bring in the tractor trailer and.
But that road condition's no different than what it is today.
That's the thing I was looking at, was if a crane had to go in there, and that's how they built the dam. There was a crane there. And they poured the concrete and stuff. I, I watched them build it, so I'm not just talking from here. And, uh, it was pretty simple to come in here, and like before, I mean, uh, sure, nobody wants a right-of-way on your property, but it ain't been used since nineteen fifty, nineteen fifty-nine.
That's about when I saw the, the book and pages.
So it hasn't been used, so I mean, it ain't like it's a big incumbents, you know, there's right-of-ways all over Northdale. There's tons of them.
And, and will it ever get used? I don't know. That depends on the conversation that's happening in five minutes or ten.
But, that's the only concern that I have, is if a machine, and I mean, cranes, they're, they're long, they don't bend in the middle.
Not very well.
And if you need a crane to get, because before, when that dam was built, they went into the river right there, just about, just past that garage, where they, they built that, that garage in the right-of-way, this thing here, not, not, yeah, this thing, right here somewhere, that went into the river, and they had, they had the road going in the river. In the river is where the road was, when they built the dam. No, that was, look at, they could do that. You can go in the river today. They have river-certified machines. My nephew's got a couple of them. You can go in the river and you quit the road, but I mean, that, you're only going in there, it ain't like you're going in there to build a house. You're going in there to to make a major repair or something.
Right. No, and I, and I understand that. I mean, you couldn't do that today, and that's what he's about to discuss with us, so.
You couldn't win the river?
Cause the trees went away. And you gotta cut down the trees, but there's more to it than just cutting down the trees.
So, so have that conversation with the homeowner. Lay your plans out, um, and, and report back to us on that, and I'm, I'm sure that the board would be in agreement on it.
Okay.
I, I do have one thing to say about, uh, the, the change. And I, and I haven't even been on the property, so. Okay, I'm, so I'm just talking. Well, one thing I do know is if you need more than thirty feet from here to here, it won't hurt the landowner one bit. How much, if this has to be forty-five feet instead of thirty feet.
Right.
Because of the equipment and me putting the property together, so you have a road, um, because what we're gonna do is, is we're gonna start, if, if we're gonna make a change, make a change for even bigger equipment.
Well, I don't even.
Because it's gonna come. I, I don't know when, but someday, right?
Well, when you bring the equipment, you're usually gonna bring things that, that equipment's gonna use.
But what I'm trying to say is, is there, uh, there, there's enough gain here for the landowner not to have an argument of whatever it's gonna take for here.
But on the flip side, and I'm not disagreeing at all with what you're saying, thirty feet wide is very large. Most roads are twenty-two feet wide of asphalt.
Well, I, the reason.
Think about that as in thirty feet, and then, now I understand not the whole thing is gonna be whatever, gravel or asphalt or whatever, but that's, that's a pretty large space. Most of your driveway easements for individual homes are fifteen to twenty-five.
Yeah, twenty.
Well, the road's wide. I, I'm not worrying about the road being wide.
And there's a, there's, I am certain that if this needed to be built, we could do a temporary easement for the building purposes, whatever width is necessary, and you could leave it open-ended width, whatever width is necessary to, to get the gra- to get the gravel down, to get the bed solidified, to get the, but your permanent easement, the one that, once the temper, once the builder, whatever is done, goes back to the thirty.
Yeah, well, okay.
Yeah, the other would be emergency care, basically.
Well, it's not, it's not just emergency care, it would be, let's say, we only need the thirty feet to get around, once the road's built right here, and I don't know, I'm just throwing that out. Then, but in order to make this corner, we need fifty. So for three months' time, you get an extra twenty feet. Once it's built, that's all you got.
The only, the only reason is, is, um.
And you can sign on to those, you can sign off to those.
Well, all of a, all of a sudden, somebody has, uh, already built something, um, and taken the rights of a thirty-foot strip.
There's many, there's many, many, many a garages that sit in right-of-ways in the town.
So what I'm just saying is, is, I, I don't know, I don't even know if that's important or not. I'm just talking because.
And, and we can, we can, like I said.
I, I think that we should just be for sure that you get enough.
Well, that wording, you would incorporate that wording into it.
Oh, yeah. When I write the easement, you know, you guys get to see the, the, the writing, and, and, you know, I can, I don't mind describing it, explaining it to you. You know, if there's, you know, we can even write a one-liner, and or the lawyer, you know, your lawyer, here's the description, Schedule A description of the easement, the thirty-foot easement, as it is now, not as it was, as it is now. And your lawyer can write, and a temporary easement as necessary to build.
Said easement.
Said easement, that would be extinguished.
That's my concern.
You know, twenty minutes after the, the, the other one is completed.
Yeah, I think that's what you need to do. I, I think it needs to say.
That, I, I can't do that, but the lawyers can.
Yeah.
Uh, I can write the description that says, from here to here and this wide. And whatever bearings and distances, and from whatever points to whatever point.
A- and the fact that you may need to modify that bump again. I mean, just because it's not navigable now until you knock that.
Well, that would be part of the, when you go in to build the road.
Right.
That, that fill becomes a cut.
Yep.
And that cut, that volume of dirt may get moved forty feet down the road.
To do that, just so it's clear ahead of time that you're not surprising somebody by modifying their front yard.
You know.
Well, come back with what you got, and at that point.
That'd be great.
We, we can always have someone look at it and see what the legal easies of it.
On this one, what's this distance?
Backfire truck in, right?
Yeah, um.
I mean, the, 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 most fire trucks are whatever, eight, ten, twelve feet.
I mean, I would think.
You can back into it, you can run a hose along the edge of it.
I would say twenty feet would be sufficient.
You know.
Twenty-five wide, and they'll, they'll back in. That way, there one's backing in, one's pulling out. Twenty feet should.
No, they won't be backing in, backing out. One would, what would happen is one fire truck would come down and hook into the dry hydrant. And then pump, and the fire trucks would do a U-turn, turn right here, and either go up the hill or turn around and go back out. And he would lay a line right here, and he would pump
To whoever.
From the river, through the truck, into the new truck.
Yeah, because of the.
And this other truck would not interfere in here at all. So it, it really doesn't need to be twenty, probably fifteen would be. What, but I'm not, I'm gonna let you guys.
I would say, I would probably wanna stick with the twenty feet.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not sure how the road comes off from the bridge and the rest.
Well, from here.
You know what that looks like, Ron? I, I've never been there.
And you would back in.
How, how much room do they need?
Hypothetically speaking.
I think they oughta go back to the Berkshire Fine Spinning Deeds and see where that is first, before you do anything.
And add in? Cause we might already own it?
We might.
We might.
Do it at a stake.
That's why I'm trying to find out what he knows.
It would be just as easy to go back to them Berkshire Fine Spinning Deeds, and you could, you could find them, them, uh, pins. I know where a couple of them are, in case somebody wants to look for, look for them in the back. I'm sure you could take your measurements from off of them, or somebody could.
You want it, I'll, I'll come down and you can show me, and I'll look in that area.
You know, cause I know where the pins are on the back, on the other side of the property. So, and act, and there is, uh, in the Berkshire Fine Spinning Deeds, the reason I know that is because my great-grandfather owned that property.
Karen had a survey in the safe from back in the fine spinning, cause I remember using it with the tannery property.
I mean, that for, I mean, I'm sure that there's, there's property enough there.
It's older than hills, but.
For that hydrant thing. And that's another thing that it won't be used either.
The, this survey here that I'm showing in orange, minus the center line, is, uh, dated off of a survey done in nineteen eighty-eight. And that's the information and deed description as of.
Yeah, well, so you have to go back a lot farther than that.
Oh, I, I did, but I didn't find anything significantly different.
Yeah, the survey that he's talking about was in the twenties. Yes.
I'm not positive. But I think some of the original plaques from Berkshire Fine Spinning are back here in this file cabinet.
Are they in, they used to be in the safe, so.
Some of them are in here, some of them are in there.
Okay.
Cause I've been involved in some of this stuff over the years too.
Do you think backing in would be the way to do that?
I certainly have.
Or it's coming down here and then unloading and driving it down.
I don't know, I think you'd wanna leave it either way, forward or backward. I honestly don't know.
Where do you unload the equipment?
Well, some of it'll be coming in, like, this one's gonna be about bringing in a barge that's on a crane. So you'd probably back that one in. But again, I don't know. I'd have to leave that to, to the driver in the circumstance. Don't know if I can answer that.
Okay. All right. Which one are my questions?
Do you need me anymore?
I'm, I'm all set.
Okay.
When is the next select board meeting?
One right there.
Can we go back just a little bit ways?
Yeah, the next one is for the.
You ready?
I wanna make sure that they've got everything down. You, you all set, Linda? Ready for the next one? Oh, yeah. Ready.
Thank you, guys.
Have you guys been furnished with copies of these? Do you want copies of these?
Uh, let's have copies of them just, cause there's, as you know, I made up comments, so they might as well know where they're looking.
So, I'm here to give you an update, and then at the end, ask you if you're okay with me proceeding on your behalf. Uh, so where we are, the, I mean, we've been in the background letting the hydro project kind of boil as a way to raise revenue eventually, to pay for the cleanup and, and, you know, get the site operational again, raise money for the town. We all know about that. So the real, the real hurdle with this one, as you guys know, is the PCVs that are in the sediment behind the dam, which they've been testing for fifteen, twenty years. Uh, there's a Williams College, a few series of Williams College students that actually did uh, a lot of work, uh, just as part of their projects, which actually is good for you guys, because it fills a lot of data gaps that were out there. Um, also shows that the levels are going down, which is not, we obviously, it's not disappearing. Um, also shows that the levels are going down, which is not, we obviously, it's not disappearing magically. It's being redeposited in different places in the river, uh, which isn't very good. And on down to the Hudson, which I'm pretty sure that uh New York's not very happy about that. So what we did is I sought to uh. To use a lot of what we learned, cause not a lot, a lot of this has happened in Vermont, so we took, tried to take a lot of what we learned at Vermont Tissue. We didn't have any PCBs, but in dealing with, in that case, dioxin, which was given off by Woodstow's, you know. Posit on leaves, the rain brings it back to the river and it catches behind the dam, which we actually removed this week finally. Uh, but using the, the assumptions for the hydrology that we did for that and transferring all those to here. So really taking uh what we learned there and applying it to your site. And what that meant is, I can't remember when the last. Proposal was done, but what we've got here is will represent a seventy-five percent reduction in cost, essentially. Huge reduction in cost in not only the cost of what will be the Phase Two and the Corrective Action Plan, but in the actual cleanup as well. So, that's where you guys are now, whether we go forward with this or not. Uh, so what we wanna do then as a next step. Uh, is. To take this to uh Vermont DEC. Uh, and actually will present it probably through. The water quality division, because they're the ones that are primarily gonna deal with the hydrology. They're the ones that are gonna wanna say, okay, that we'll we'll agree with you, this is the only affected area, X, Y, Z, and then they'll, they'll make recommendations back to Brownfields. It'll go up, you know, in into uh into DEC. Um, federally and they'll approve it. Uh, we'd also like to share it with BCRC because they're gonna be a good funding source for you guys. Uh, I don't know if they'll be able to provide funding, there's a whole variety of different uh things that you guys are, uh, have access to. Uh, up, up to the cleanup itself, uh, because you required the property through involuntary acquisition. So you actually have a lot of options for funding. Uh, and actually, I, in looking at this, I think that there actually is enough funding out there to do the testing. Uh, it may take us a year to get it, but also to do the cleanup. So this becomes something that's very practical and should happen anyway regardless of what happens with the hydro facility. Uh, and that's kind of where we're steward this, stewarding this along, is this should happen anyway. It has to happen for us to go forward, but it needs to happen anyway, it's obviously a major problem.
Otherwise, you can't do anything.
Otherwise, you can't do anything, right? So whether we go forward or not, we're trying to get this to where we can hand it off to you. And the next step is now to take it to uh BCRC and to the state, to see if they'll approve the plan and then to look for funding through both. So, any questions about any of this stuff?
The questions I had, and I think you answered some of it, they're gonna have to give the approval. Uh, I I looked through this on the weekend and there was several questions, but a couple of them you answered. One was who pays the testing, cause you had a price in here, eighty, about around eighty thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and basically, it sounds like what we would do as a municipality is. I don't know if we would do it in partnership or how we would do it, but we would go after the federal grants that are for cleanup and so forth.
And I think we s- we go to BCRC for that, they're gonna be the the big help in doing that. I think Dennis, uh, uh, my partner had also applied for a federal grant. So there's some federal grants that we can apply for on your behalf directly. There's also grants that are gonna come through uh Vermont DEC that BCRC will have access to. So there's more than one avenue, all working on different timelines and and it's not, it's really not a lot of money. It's not a huge sticker for this one, so I think BCRC may be faster and easier in this case.
Yeah, well, the last time, the estimates was in the hundreds of thousands, and that's why we we didn't get put in the list that they were making at the BCRC.
Right.
This, I think, is a much better chance, I agree with you. The, the thing I guess I'm uh looking at is, is uh. The other question I had is provide access, which we talked about tonight.
Mm-hmm.
So, who would pen the grants and ask for them, would this be something we'd be looking for BCRC to do? In, or would it be something that we were required to get somebody to do?
Uh, no, I, we are not looking for you guys to do it. I think we're gonna deal with BCRC primarily. And then Dennis will probably handle any grant writing. We're not asking you guys to do any of the grant writing or anything, we'll want you to review it before we submit it.
Right, and sign, cause we have to sign.
You have to sign it, yeah, so we'll wanna know that it's okay with you, but we'll take care of all that.
One of the other questions I had was, you know, when we took this land, uh, one of the things was the risk and liabilities, where it was that we weren't to disturb anything. Or create a higher risk, or otherwise we could be putting some of the bill.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so I'm assuming when this grant is written and for the cleanup and like that, it's gonna talk about what we're doing to lessen that, not. Disturb it in some way or.
I'm not an attorney, and it's probably an attorney question, or at least, you know, maybe I would talk, it it might be worth a ques- I don't, I'm I'm kinda conflicted on answering that. So I would actually recommend talking to uh DEC's attorney, their counsel, because it's free and they can answer that question. I, my experience, my own personal experience is if you're trying to do the right thing, you're very, very legally protected. Uh, before you do anything, uh, we would, and it's part of our agreement, we would enroll. Uh, both the town and uh and and uh Husick River Hydro into something called Brella. Which is the Brownfields reuse, uh, Something Limited Liability Act, I can't remember what the, what the E is. But anyway, you'd get enrolled in that, which actually, it limits your financial liability. Uh, to what's the, what's defined in the Corrective Action Plan. So, and you have to have the Corrective Action Plan before you can actually do anything. So moving forward at this stage, we aren't actually proposing anything be done other than paperwork and getting money to do things and what have you. Um, but I do think that's a question you may wanna ask somebody in the state about, it may be worth a phone call.
Okay, and throughout this process, the town would be a partner with with your company in doing this?
Uh, yeah, we're kind of acting on your behalf for for this part, but we're involved certainly, mentioned and everything like that. There there's only to a certain degree though, because it actually is, it's good for you guys that you own it and how you owned it. Because you have access to fund, a lot of funds that you wouldn't otherwise have access to.
So, let me see if I understood that correctly. So basically, at this point. You're helping the municipality out through the process of getting grants and stuff to see if it's viable to clean up. And if it is, get grants to clean it up.
Correct.
And and at this point, you're really like a consultant to us, not so much a partner.
Right, cause I need to get you guys to the point where this can actually happen. This doesn't happen, nothing else happens.
Yeah, but but again, just, so it's the town that's taking the action, the town is the one that's the, moving forward on it. And you're providing the consulting support to make it so we understand and do the right thing.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
That's just.
The only things that this would put you on the hook for long-term is when you get to the Corrective Action Plan. One thing that I know that they're gonna ask for, which isn't, it it actually isn't a big expense, but it's something you have to do. Is they'd wanna do, uh, and it's good for the environment, they'd wanna do uh monitoring. So, once a year, you'd have to take three water samples, that'll cost you forty-five bucks each to get tested. I'm actually doing that next week at at uh, at Vermont Tissue. And you just send them off, they get tested, cause they're gonna wanna make sure that that nothing additionally is being released, or if it is, where did it come from? It's coming from upstream, they know they gotta go upstream and look for something, but you become a monitoring site, essentially.
We do that at their cap landfills and stuff now.
Gotcha, yeah, so you're familiar with that.
We're familiar with that process, okay. Uh, and I think that's uh. I I have.
I know Henry and I are kinda, are new on the board here. Could we step back a little bit and just talk about how how this whole, how this has all come about? A brief, a brief discussion as to how we've entered in to working with you on this and.
Uh, let me start even further back.
Please.
Basically, what's happened is is through the years, we have been trying to get people to use the hydro. And we've had several companies come forward and make recommendations on what they would do and how they would move forward. On the the hydro and and put it in and enter into a contract with the town where we would receive funds in some ways from that process. Uh, not just funds to clean it up, but ongoing funds as they sell electricity. Uh, what has always stopped that is the PCBs behind the dam. Every time we've worked up to a point where we're getting ready for a contract, it's been killed in the water and it gone away. Uh, we have been lucky that the, they're staying with us this year and they're trying to find ways that we can solve that problem. So we then can move forward with the next step, which is, would be building the place into a hydro facility that actually produces electricity. And the the town can enter into some sort of.
If you want a good idea, I suggest you go up to the Paper Mill Bridge. Uh, I was up there last weekend, and yes, and uh, see the work that's going on there, it is very impressive. Uh, the things that are being done there, um, and that, I understand it's a much smaller dam.
Yeah, and coincidentally built by the same person in the same year.
Really?
Yeah, those two dams are identical, it's kind of, it's very informative, actually. So by the time I get to this one, I'm gonna know an awful lot.
And I I suggest that if you you, you guys have the time, you go up and look at it and see.
Matter of fact, the farm right there.
Yeah, see exactly what they're doing, it's uh, you know, and I I think Mr. Scully has uh, is doing this for. Multiple reasons, but all for the good that I can see. It's a teaching tool, I actually took an ecology uh course uh through, when I was going to college at CCV. That was uh, uh, we went up to his uh property and and at that time, it was in its very infantile stages. But it's, it's rewarding to see it actually happening and the same thing could be happening down here. And again, uh, I commend you for going forward with this because nobody else wanted to touch it.
Just more stubborn than the others. Well, and it's interesting with this one too, because I think to answer your question a little bit, I brought, there was a, the people, the my. The people who came before me here with these presentations had never dealt with hydro and had never dealt with brownfields, I've actually dealt with both. It's a, it's a, it's a weird skill set to have, and there may be other people in the state that have done it, but I've never met any of them. Um, so it just so happened I had an odd skill set, uh, and you guys have an odd site, so.
And it matched.
Yep.
And that's where we are.
Yeah, but I invite you to come by the Vermont Tissue site, we're having a lot of, a lot of fun there, a little wet today.
How much power are you expecting to put out of the Vermont Tissue?
Vermont Tissue, uh, kilowatt-hours a year, uh, hovering, and there's two different estimations, hovering between one point five seven five. And one point six gigawatt-hours a year, so.
It's good.
Hundred and fifty homes to two hundred and twenty homes, depending on whose calculator you use.
And and what do you estimate this, this if it became actually functional?
Um, three and a half, probably three and a half gigawatt-hours. Uh, I I'm guessing you're almost triple the size. I'm ninety-four point five square miles of watershed on an average of uh sixteen something feet ahead. This is twenty-eight.
Six hundred homes.
It's a lot, oh, yeah, it's a lot, it's a lot of power.
Is that your estimate?
Yeah, I'm three hundred and sixty kilowatt and you'll be about just, just under one point one megawatt.
Okay.
So, yeah.
You're talking closer to.
Yeah, thousand, thousand.
It's a lot, it's a lot of homes.
I thought you said two hundred, but you said three hundred.
No, for, well, for mine, it's about, for mine, it's probably a a hundred and fifty to two hundred. Again, it depends on whether you use EPA's calculator or somebody else's calculator. So you guys are probably gonna be about five hundred, something like that, five to six hundred homes, my best guess.
Good green power.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions from the board? You have anything else you wanna bring forward to us?
Uh, two quick things, well, and actually, I wanna ask you, are you guys okay with me submitting this to to DEC and and to BCRC, just sharing the information? I didn't wanna do that without your blessing.
Motion to do that?
Motion to submit it.
Second. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. Uh, two other things, thank you. Two other things I've noticed while I'm there, you may just wanna keep an eye on, um. I I noticed there've just been a lot of people, a lot of parts missing, and I keep putting bolts back on and they keep coming off and things are flying in the river. So I don't know if there's any way of keeping it policed a little more, probably not. One thing I'm, I wanted to point out is a hazard that you may wanna be aware of, have any of you been down in the turbines?
No.
Did you go down that day?
I started in, that's all, I didn't go up the tube.
Is that the top area where it's graded? Uh, yeah, well, it's in in the powerhouse, there's actually a way to get inside of the flume. You actually climb down on top of the turbine and then you can go up the flume, which is all collapsed. But the thing I realized, and I had been in there several times and I never realized it before. But I was measuring off the collapsed section to get back to the concrete. And I might recommend that you put up some kind of a Jersey barrier or something to keep people from driving on the brick. Because that's actually just wood and I-beam, that's all hollow underneath there, at least for a big extent of it. And I don't know how much load it can take, but a, you know, good-sized truck back there might just fall down, you know, fifteen feet. Well, just saying, we 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 park fire hydrants on, fire trucks on there and draft out of the river. Okay. That's our only water supply right now.
Sounds, sounds like we might wanna.
Yeah, I would take a look at it, cause it's, I mean, I'd be happy to go down there with somebody if you wanna see it, but I I didn't realize it. And then when I realized what it was, I scratched my head for a second and thought, well, yeah, I've driven over that plenty of times, I just never thought about it.
Parts of it's collapsing, I I, you might wanna look at that, just to warn all the fire department. We wouldn't wanna fire engine down.
Yeah, and maybe you can get back, you can get back partway. Jersey barriers in there then right away and get it closed off. Yeah, and I think you can get back partway, but it's when you actually get onto the brick section, on the backside of the building. You're, you're over nothing other than, uh, you know, support beams and wood and, yeah, I'm not really sure how it's constructed, but it certainly doesn't, you know. You know, when I went down there tonight, there were vehicles, vehicles down there tonight.
The, the, the tin building that's.
You got it, upstream, and I haven't paced it off, but I'm gonna guess the first tw- twenty feet upstream of that or or just over open air.
I've been down in there many times because I get called out to post it for no swimming and, you know, this and that and the other thing. And I, I've always wondered, you know, why is this area all fancy?
That's something we should act on right now. That's why.
All right, uh, you wanna make Dennis a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we have Casey get a couple uh, big concrete blocks and close that right off.
A second.
Yeah, you should do that at the front of the building across the roadway there, even though I know it's.
Pick up two concrete blocks, other uh, two by two by seven blocks.
Because they're breaking in the door and stuff, if we put it up in front of the bill, so it goes across, then they can't park next and go in the door and take stuff and all kinds of. Okay.
We just need to vote on it.
So I got a motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And it's, the quicker the better. Are you gonna be able to back up to that and then still get, draw water?
You might be able to take them back to the back part of the building. We have, uh, just, just to keep up the speed, uh, underneath the the main bridge. Uh, we're under contract to have that work done right now, it's all been approved.
Okay, so you'll be.
It's about a week or two till the contractor gets in there and does that work.
Okay.
We'll have access there.
Do you wanna mark it there where you want them, where you want it closed off?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not quite sure exactly, I just don't wanna.
Well, just that way so, um, our, our foreman will know where to set them or.
Is that something? Give me a call and I'll just meet him down there. So, you could do a quick little sketch on a piece of paper where the building is in the driveway and just. Gotcha.
Yeah, either way, or whatever, okay, but we we should do that right away.
You have a number you can leave with Linda that he can reach her?
Yep, absolutely.
And then uh, he can, he can show Casey where to do it. Okay.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, moving on. Personnel for transfer station, thought you were gonna go last.
I'm at the bottom of the heap anyway.
All right, guys, I'm sorry I wasn't here for the meeting the other week, I was up north. Have you come to an agreement, uh, do we need to go into executive session, is it something we're doing now? Don't all speak at once.
I'm just reading here.
I don't know, it's pretty tough to say.
We didn't take any action, um.
Okay, that's what I.
Okay, the motion was, uh, gonna read.
So, I guess I'll ask the question. Uh, the last thing I knew about this, we were gonna basically ask Jim to fill in on a temporary basis. Until January first, at which point we hope to have enough information to decide what we're gonna do. Is the board still in agreement with that? I know that's one of the things I thought we did.
Yeah, um, we're in agreement with that, I uh, I believe, uh. I don't know what I can say and what I can't.
I'd like to make a motion we go into executive session.
Yeah, I would feel better.
If you're gonna talk salary, things like that, oh, okay, I didn't know if you guys had already settled all that.
Yes, uh, I'll second that motion.
Okay, I got a motion to go into executive session. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We will be making a decision when we come out, okay, but at this point, we're. We're out. And we off the air?
Is the TV on?
Voice is on, we're still on the air. Can you make a motion to come out of executive session?
Second, yeah.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Need a motion to uh, basically, uh, Jim temporary through January. Uh, at thirteen dollars an hour and Hap will be consulting with him at thirteen dollars an hour until January also. Or until we revisit.
I make that said motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna abstain. I didn't speak on the issue, so I'm abstaining.
Okay.
Okay. Next.
So, you got three ayes there. Okay, next thing, employee evaluations. And uh. See where we are with that. Welcome aboard, by the way. You've been hired.
Yes, thank you. I think.
He didn't go for yours, don't worry about it.
I would make, I I would say that the board needs to make a motion to go in an executive session. Uh, to discuss, uh, we haven't done Linda's evaluation yet. And we need to do a Linda's evaluation and get that out of the way. Okay, then after that we can start, uh, decide whether we wanna do the other couple of people or whether we wanna start doing pay raises.
Make that said motion.
That excuses me, right? Okay, good night, gentlemen. Thank you, Jim. And I will keep on keeping on.
Thank you.
Okay, and uh, basically this time when we come out, there won't be a decision that's made on the, the air or anything, because we won't be setting pay raises tonight, but we're gonna do an evaluation.
Right.
I thought we were gone.
If you wanna, we can do it.
I'd like to.
No, I thought that was. Somebody refresh me.
Yeah, no.
If we're gonna do, if we're gonna do that, then we need to stay on the air. You know, so I just, we go in the executive session, set the pay raises, then we're gonna come back out. And we have to be on the air and make the decision.
Uh, we're gonna do an evaluation right now.
And then we're gonna come out.
Then we'll come out, okay.
Or are you gonna do the evaluation and then set pay raises? Or or are you gonna come out after the evaluation, go back in and do pay raises?
Well, well, uh, right now I think that we're gonna go ahead and um, uh, perhaps uh discuss uh pay raises. Whether or not that's gonna come to a vote or not, I have no idea. So I would not say that it's not gonna happen. That's my point.
I'm just trying to get. The method in which we're doing it. We have to do an evaluation. Once we do the evaluation, I would assume that we're then gonna ask that person to go home. And then we're gonna go in and do pay raises, and we're gonna come out and s- and set what those pay raises are.
Right, right, that's, I agree with that.
Okay, so we're going in executive session this time to do evaluations, then we'll come out. And then we have to go back in again to do pay raises, because it's two separate items.
That is correct.
Okay. Do you get that?
Play evaluation I had the first time.
Okay, uh, all those in favor going, I think I had a motion for that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. And we will be back out of this. Hey, make a, need a motion to come out of executive session?
Make a motion to come out of executive session.
I'll second it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, I need a motion to go back in executive session and we're gonna uh deal with pay raises at this time. And when we come back out, we'll be announcing pay raises.
Perhaps.